Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is David Freese. I'm the mayor of Tongonoxie. I'm calling to order this July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Tongonoxie City Council. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Huntington?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Partridge?
Here.
Ms. McCutcheon?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Donnelly?
Here.
Mr. Dale?
Here.
Thank you. Would you join us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thanks, everyone. Thanks for being here. I appreciate it. Second over to our business tonight is the approval of minutes from the previous meeting. Is there any conversation about those minutes, or is there a move, a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. McCutcheon. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item three on the agenda is the consent agenda, where we review the bill payments from the previous period. Anyone have any questions about the bill payments, want to talk about anything, or shall we move to approve?
I'll move to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. Thank you, Ms. Stevens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. On to old business. Nothing listed tonight. Did anybody sign up to speak today? Last I heard, no one had.
I haven't seen any signups. Mr. Porter, do you, any update on that?
Mayor, we have one gentleman here who would like to address the council during open comment period, if he could.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that. Sir, or ma'am, sir. We give each person about three minutes, and you're on the clock.
Good evening. I'm Rich Welsh, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Pardon me, I haven't been before a city council meeting before, since I was a Boy Scout, so it's been a long time. I've been in Tongonoxie for about seventeen years. I'm retired from the penitentiary. Initially, when I got here, we spent a couple hundred thousand on a house over in the far Sandusky subdivision. And after that point in time, the city council at some point, I know there was some argument about this, they authorized people to start storing large trailers and whatever they wanted in front of their front yards. You have some new development going up across the highway, and it's been my observation that this thing is getting a little bit out of control. I got Class A motorhomes being parked in front of three-hundred-thousand-dollar houses on the property line. I got fifth wheels being put out there. And I'm not really complaining about people with, you know, single-axle trailers and boats and stuff, but we went on a walk this morning within walking distance of my house before the heat got too excessive, counted up about a dozen of these things, with people with, in one case, two trailers in their driveway. They're being parked on the property line. People are starting to span their driveways where they're putting a little pad right up next to the property line, that kind of thing. The houses are getting more expensive, and people are kind of doing what they want to do, and I think that was an argument fifteen years ago. We own the house, we can do what we want, and the city council redacted their policy on campers and whatever. But what I'm essentially proposing is, I'd like you to take another look at the storage of multi-axle items of this nature in the front of homes, which are literally devaluing the neighborhood property. I have a fifth wheel next to my house, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, except when they take it out on vacation. It's depreciated. I can't sell my house with that thing. I'm gonna lose money on it. They're not gonna move it. Full-size motorhomes. People don't invest three hundred thousand dollars in a home to have a guy come up and park a camper right next to the parking line. It's a blight. It looks bad. My property is literally being shaded in the morning as the sun comes over, you know, a twelve or thirteen-foot fifth wheel. I don't really appreciate it. Neighbor's not gonna cooperate with it. But I'm looking around. People are buying these properties, and I see all these things that are starting to pop up. I'm gonna tell you, you probably have a hundred examples of this in town. It's gotten out of control to the point where people are inconvenienced by other people's decisions. And there's full-size farm equipment parked in some of these driveways. I talked to the code inspector about it. Can't do anything. But essentially, I think you need to draw a line. Do you want to park a school bus in front of a house, or do you want a guy to have his work van out there? I'm not trying to encumber anybody that's trying to make a living by parking out his equipment trailer in front of his house. That's not the point. But you have full-size storage facilities across the street, across the highway. I have a trailer. I park it on post, and I pay for it. But there is a procedure. If you can afford a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house, if you can afford a fifth wheel, you can afford the storage. And I think that's reasonable to look at. And like I said, a single-axle trailer, you know, this is what I use and do and stuff like that, that's not a big deal, and everybody knows that. But the size of some of this stuff is getting a little out of control. I wanted to come down to the city council and ask you to take another look at it.
Thank you so much for coming down and explaining that very calmly. Sometimes people get to the mic, and they are already upset. What have we done on this recently?
When I was on council, Mr. Mayor, we adjusted the policy to make sure that any personal property that people have in, on their property needs to be on an improved surface. And so those changes were made during my tenure on council, and that's something that the city inspector knows to make sure to enforce.
Okay. And that's, that doesn't go enough, you think?
I don't think it does. I think you're a progressive community, and I will grant you that this is a rural community. It used to be. It's transitioning into a bedroom community. Everybody knows that. These people that are buying four hundred thousand houses are not farmers. They're not ranchers. They're expecting their property value to elevate. That's gonna change your tax base, all right? I can tell you that I'm guessing it's gonna slice twenty-five thousand dollars off the price of my home if I try to sell it, all right? And I think everybody else is in that position. I understand the whole hard-stand kind of thing. That's been talked to with Brian Harder, or Brandon Harder. And, but at a certain point in time, you have to draw the line as to size. We did, at one point in time, have a school bus parked in the street. It was blocking the intersection. Couldn't really see around it. They were parking it there during the day as a matter of convenience. These little issues arise. But I just want to ask you if you would take another look at the number of axles on these things. That would seem to solve the problem. These, some of these things are huge, and you all know it. You all drive around the community, and you see what people are taking liberties with, and it's getting excessive. And there's a lot of people that are not gonna show up in front of city council and go, hey, where are you gonna draw the line on this? Because we're gonna start losing money as neighbors. Just line of sight in my neighborhood, I got two of them. I just think it's excessive, and I don't, I don't think it's something that, as a community, we should be expected to tolerate when this stuff is parked there. So that's what I got to say.
Okay. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on to old business, or sorry, new business. Resolution zero-seven-two-four-zero-one, approving and authorizing execution of the Fourth Amendment to the real estate contract of sale between the City of Tongonoxie, Kansas, and Unilock Chicago Incorporated. Mr. Brekovich, welcome back.
Yep, thanks, Mayor. So just, there's, the agenda statement submitted for this has a brief synopsis, including the history of it, and I'll, I'll just try to go over that really quickly. Back in twenty-eighteen, Unilock was the first tenant placed into the Tongonoxie Business Park. They purchased Lot Five, which is about thirty-four acres. The development agreement that the city entered into with Unilock, which was also part of the sales agreement, was acknowledging that Unilock had kind of a two-phase plan, and they were gonna split the lot into northern and southern portion. In the northern portion, they were gonna build a western regional sales office and have a sales yard, and they've completed all of those requirements. But the goal of the city was to build a manufacturing plant where there would be more jobs generated and be a fit for the use in the business park. And so the development agreement contemplated certain timeframes that that would need to be accomplished in, as well as certain performance standards that Unilock would meet as a company, so that we could collectively agree, hey, you've met these milestones you've set as a, as a company, and now it's time to move forward with the project. We also, the development agreement contemplated some potential extensions. So we've exhausted all those extensions. We gave them some additional time because of the COVID epidemic, and the, Unilock acknowledges that they've met those milestones internally, but that they're not ready to move forward with the manufacturing plant. So the development agreement kind of anticipated that we might get to that crossroad as well, and so it gave them opportunity to do a variety of things. The city to take the property back, the ability to, you know, in twenty-eighteen, they were the first tenant, and so the city sold them that property for ten thousand an acre approximately. And so one of the options was, hey, if we get to this crossroads, we can agree that we'll go hire a third party to give us an appraisal of the property for whatever its current value is, and if there's a difference between what you paid then and what the property's worth now, we'll go negotiate this premium value. So we did that appraisal earlier this year in twenty-four. We hired a firm out of Overland Park, Kansas, and they did come back that the, the property was appraised at about twenty-five thousand. So we've discussed that with Unilock, where initially they had the opportunity to pay that premium just for that southern portion of the property. And if I didn't say it before, the northern and southern portion were kind of split almost, almost in half. So if you can imagine, seventeen acres and seventeen acres. There are some portions of their site that are still reserved as wetlands and can't be touched, and there was an easement granted on the southern border to Evergy for some overhead lines that were rerouted. So the discussion then we had, that we had with Unilock was if the city was going to stay engaged on the performance standard to put in a manufacturing plant. And so what we've brought before you tonight removes that performance standard from the city, but applies the premium to the entire site. And so as such, Unilock would be paying an additional four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And in exchange for releasing the performance standard, the city has the right of first refusal for ten years from the date of this agreement. Should Unilock not advance a manufacturing plant and want to sell the site to someone else, that the city can come in and have the right of first refusal. So based on what they originally paid for the site, which was about three hundred thousand, adding this to it, you, you know, we get to seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, a little more than that. Staff is recommending moving forward with this item. Unilock remains committed to the site. They, you know, as a company, they have different regions. There was two projects that they've advanced in front of us. One was expected, one was unexpected. It was in West Virginia where they, they just announced it. And so the Chicago office is who we deal with. They, you know, they would love that they're the next in priority, but they can't guarantee that. I think the ten years sufficiently covers the city. Again, should they not move forward so that they weren't speculative on the property, I also believe the additional premium we're making them pay on it gets the, the idea of speculating and holding the property for, you know, six to ten years. We, we're making them pay for that right. So I'm certainly, I'm making the recommendation to move forward with it, but I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Is Unilock DSM, part of Royal Whatever, and, and Hills is part of Colgate? Is Unilock part of some other bigger?
No, they're headquartered in Canada. This is, this, our location is coordinated through Chicago, but essentially, it's a growth opportunity for their western region, which would serve, you know, areas, I guess, to the west of us, to be obvious. But, but to answer your question, it's, it's a company headquartered in Canada, but they're operating in the United States as well.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I'll make a statement that I'm gonna vote no on it, and I think all the council understands my reasoning for it. The property would not have been sold to the company had they come in with only three jobs. I'm very clear that, in my mind, very clear that that would not have happened. And the change, I think the city has fulfilled every piece of its performance agreement up to the last letter of the agreement. And I understand they have a business decision to make, and they made that business decision not to build their manufacturing plant in Tongonoxie, and not to hire the people that they promised to hire. That's a business decision, and I think our best business decision would be control the seventeen acres, just tell, to sell to someone else who would create that amount of jobs.
Anyone else?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the sale by adopting the resolution seven-two-four-zero-one, execution of the Fourth Amendment to the real estate contract of the sale between the Tongonox, of Tongonoxie, Kansas and Unilock Chicago, Inc.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Ms. McCutcheon. Is there any more discussion? I want to make sure that we don't overlook this.
I appreciate Chris's points so much. We've also just, this is why we put the right of first refusal in that contract. So, so this, so if they don't go ahead and fulfill, and this is a company with a good reputation, and they've, and they were the first people to come into the business park, and they've been good partners in the community. So I think this is a, a good compromise all the way around.
I agree with Ms. Stevens. It's a compromise. It's one sort of forced to us by some factors outside of our control. If, if we had free use of that, those acres, that'd be one thing. But, you know, we're dealing with, again, forces outside of our control in terms of how we plat and use that land. So I also just want to say, I appreciate the city staff and our, and our city attorney for all their help on this one, because I know this has been, you have to have good relationships with these, with the people to get a deal like this. I think this is ultimately in the best interest of the community. But it does represent a compromise. In a perfect world, I think I certainly agree with Mr.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for passing Resolution zero-four-two-four-zero-one. All, Ms. Huntington, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Partridge?
Aye.
Ms. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly?
No.
Mr. Dale?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. New business, number, item five B, Resolution zero-four-two-four-zero-two, revenue neutral rate noticed to the Leavenworth County Clerk for two thousand twenty-five budget year. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is brought forward to you to give us time to consider the action of directing staff to notify the county clerk of our maximum mill levy to be considered in the two thousand twenty-five budget, which will be adopted in September of this year. We have four tax levy funds currently active. The combination mill levy of the four is what is considered in determining whether a budget is revenue neutral or not. The proposed mill levy is forty point seven-five-seven mils across all funds, which is just a fractional amount higher than the current year mill levy. So it's not exactly a flat mill levy. There's a very slight increase in one of the two library funds and a slight decrease in the other library fund. It's a net zero point zero-six-two-mill increase. So with this, it gives us maximum flexibility, because after conducting the public hearing and the, and the budget public hearing, we are able to adopt a budget with a lower mill levy, but not higher. So proposing this amount will reflect it in the estimates received by taxpayers, but it isn't what we're held to when we adopt the budget later in the year. Happy to take any questions you might have, but we're familiar with the process to inform Ms. Klosinski at the county of the proposed budget R and R rate, and ready to take your direction on it.
Counsel, do you have any direction for Mr. Porter? If that, if we need a motion for this, motion and vote, correct?
Please, that'd be great.
Okay.
To approve the resolution.
If there's no conversation, I would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number zero-seven dash two-four dash zero-two, Resolution calling and providing for notice of a public hearing on the governing body's intent to levy a property tax exceeding the revenue neutral rate in the City of Tongonoxie, Kansas pursuant to KSA seven-nine dash two-nine-eight-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Resolution zero-seven-two-four-zero-three, Consider Approval of Assignment and Assumption of the West Village Development Agreement and Collateral Assignment of Same-In Mortgage. Mr. Brekovich. Oh, sorry, I apologize, Ms. Kerschelich.
Correct. I'll address this. The council will remember that you saw this item a few weeks ago. This is substantially the same as what you reviewed last time. It adds some of the investment partners of the, the Assignee, and it also addresses collateral assignment of the, the development agreement in connection with a loan. So we did not know those items at the time that we presented the initial assignment to council. We learned about those shortly thereafter, and so we are bringing it back for your review and consideration. I did review the related documents, including the loan agreement itself, the agreement among the investors, and I am satisfied that the city's interests are well protected.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to, for Resolution oh-seven-two-four-zero-three, for the approval of the assignment and assumption of West Village Development Agreement and collateral assignment of same-in mortgage.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Coming.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Item six, City Manager Agenda. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll present a quick update about the June two thousand twenty-four monthly budget report and our quarterly treasurer's report for quarter two, two thousand twenty-four. It's hard to believe we're already halfway through the fiscal year, but we are, and we're moving quickly towards the end of the year, it feels like. We do have a couple of things to note. I won't belabor too many details in the report, because as you know, it's quite extensive with detailed budget to actuals, comparisons for revenues and expenses by category and subcategory, and of course, by fund. One thing, though, I will pull out as a note, and Mr. Partridge brought this up earlier, is that we are showing year-to-date progress on revenues and expenses well below our budgeted expectations for the Water and Sewer Fund. That is in part, and in large part, due to assumptions for Hills Pet Nutrition, our largest water and sewer customer in the city. We had to budget conservatively to be able to accommodate higher usage than what we've actually experienced, and thus, the projections are high in both those revenue and expense categories. I did a quick review of the budgeted fund balance change projections for our Water and Sewer Fund, and our Water Fund is forecast to add about ninety-eight thousand dollars to fund balance at the end of the year, of this year. And our Sewer Fund is looking like it will add just about two thousand dollars to fund balance. So overall, a very good year when comparing revenues to expenses to date, plus the last six months of the year. So happy to report that. And again, we've had a, a strong record with our current utility rates since two thousand twenty, and in large part, that's due to the growth of the utility that's helped keep rates affordable for existing ratepayers. The other thing of note that I'll, I'll spend a little bit of time on is sales and use tax receipts. Our receipts, as you've seen in a couple of recent months, are lower than budgeted projections. We did take a pretty good step up in our budgeted projections for two thousand twenty-four, and we're not alone in the state of Kansas in seeing municipalities reporting lower-than-expected receipts compared to budget. The state of Kansas as well, in their, in their share of sales tax. Right now, our net sales and use tax in the general fund and our infrastructure sales tax fund, which are city sales and use taxes, are five and a half percent lower than budget. That's about a twenty-three-thousand-dollar impact to date. If the year improves, we'll, we'll narrow that gap. If it continues at the same pace, we'd be looking at close to forty-five thousand dollars, forty-six thousand dollars short across those two sales tax funds. That is significant at the end of the year in that amount, but luckily and fortunately, we are in a strong position with many years in a row of sales tax receipts exceeding budgeted expectations, and so we have strong fund balances in the general fund and the infrastructure sales tax fund. Looking at the Capital Projects Fund, we're at five point one percent under budget in that, so the share of the county sales tax is doing slightly better to budget projections, but still short. And that's about a fourteen-thousand-dollar impact to date, and about a twenty-eight-thousand-dollar impact in a twelve-month period. We are hopeful that we'll see a bounce back in performance. One thing that we're gonna plan to do in the, in the July financial report is do a deeper dive into sales and use tax receipts and AICS codes, and to look at, in particular, of interest to us is the impact of lumber and other building construction material suppliers. So we have a record, as, as you all know, of between thirty and fifty houses a year in new single-family home construction, as well as commercial activity that's not exempt from sales tax in our community in the last several years. Sales tax, you know, numbers are augmented by that, and in this year, for instance, our latest Home Builders Report showed only between, really just over, just under ten single-family home units added this year. So we're definitely not on pace with where we've been in prior years in terms of new building permits for single-family housing, which does, in almost every case, pay sales tax on those commodities that are delivered to the site. So that's sort of our deep dive that we're planning for a future report, but we don't have that information for you tonight. Hopefully, too, with the Roush Coleman development, if you've not driven by recently, it's coming close to the time where they'll pull their first building permit and commence construction. And if they construct the homes in a very accelerated fashion like we anticipate, we could see a bounce back as soon as the very end of this fiscal year, and definitely in two thousand twenty-five, the start of the fiscal year with that activity going on.
And one thing you might look at, the, the cost of lumber's dropped in half from last year to this year.
Okay.
And so your sales tax is gonna follow suit along with your lumber bill. And where you're seeing in construction, the price of labor, which is not sales tax, is what's really pushed up to offset the reduction in price of lumber. And if you want to look at those things, I can show it to you firsthand if you want to study it, because it is, it is really concerning to me that we may be into a trend of lower construction for the next two to three years, and you can look at that by development.
Yep.
Because the development has to come first before the construction comes.
That's a great point.
Maybe, maybe Roush Coleman will fill that gap.
But for a short period, because they'll be fast. So longer-term, medium-term, we might see a decrease, yeah.
Thank you.
I don't have any other items to report, other than, you know, the treasurer's report is required to be published, and it will be published, I think, on Wednesday this week, actually. So look for that in the Wednesday edition of the Tongonoxie Mirror.
Real quick, looks like we got our last major property tax remittance, right?
We did, yep.
How much of the remaining one hundred and sixty-six thousand budgeted that we're short on the revenue do we expect to get, do you think, between now and the end of the year?
I think we'll come up right to the budget.
Okay.
Okay.
We've largely got the progressive motor vehicle remittances remaining, and that's included in that property tax category.
Right. Okay. Good. That's all I got.
And we'll have some miniscule delinquent taxes as well.
Yep. Okay.
Anything else for Mr. Porter and Mr. Brakovic? All right, then we'll move on to the city attorney agendas.
No items, Mayor.
Okay, Mayor, Pro Tem's agenda?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
City council, do you have anything on your agenda? Nope. I have nothing on my agenda either. So Jake, is there a motion to dismiss?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to wish everybody a happy NCAA 2025 release date for all those who celebrate, and with that, I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? See you in a few weeks.